Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman, and as President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on the agenda this evening have previously been discussed at the earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the SAISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our media agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located at the back of the room should you want to speak on an issue this evening. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. You will be notified when your time is up, you are to stop speaking and return to your seat. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time, and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out, and any speaker with a complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. If you have a pending grievance being processed, please be reminded that you are not permitted to speak about the grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SAISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members and myself, to turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for the support of SAISD. We do have a quorum this evening. Mrs. Madalil Flint is on her way, but we can go ahead and start because we do have a quorum, six of us here. I'm going to call up Harold Watkins, he's pastor at Freedom Fellowship Church, for the invocation.
Every student who is a part of the San Angelo Independent School District, Lord, that they would not get weary in their well-doing, especially the teachers, Lord, that they would never get tired, they would never stop being inspired to teach our children to grow up and to become mature adults, to be a great part of this society. Father, I thank you for the wisdom that you impart to those on this board that are here, that are not here, Lord, that you would give them the desires of their heart to see this school district excel. As I was reading their goals and the vision of the school district, Lord, it is about the student. It is about bringing them out from where they're at, Lord, to where you want them to be in their life to succeed. And, Lord, I thank you that that is the desire of every person on this board, every teacher in this school, and every employee. So, Father, today, we give you thanks and glory for who you are. I thank you that we live in a country where we can still lift up the name of Jesus and exalt the name above every name. So bless this time, bless this meeting, that it would be orderly, or that much would be accomplished, and, Lord, that as we leave from this place, that we can say it was good to be in your presence, and it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
We now have some fifth graders from Bonham Elementary. They're pros, they've been doing this since pre-K, they told me, so they're going to get, we're going to be doing this well today. Sam Wilcox, Zoe Sutherland, Kayden Miller, and Harper Brandon. If you all come up and help us do this. All right. We now have some recognitions, and so Soon Chau is going to lead us first in a recognition for the San Angelo Schools Foundation.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. Tonight, we recognize the San Angelo Schools Foundation for their continued support in joining SAISD in uplifting our students and our staff. These dedicated foundation members, some of which we have here with us tonight, collaborate with our district and educators to help our students reach their individual hopes and dreams by supporting and inspiring our educators to create and pursue innovation and excellence in the classroom. Since May of 2002 alone, the San Angelo Schools Foundation has awarded more than $115,000 in scholarships, funded primarily through payroll deductions of the San Angelo ISD staff to graduating seniors. This year, the Schools Foundation awarded more than $94,000 in grants to 75 difference-makers and nine all-campus grants, supporting innovative learning across 19 campuses. We cannot wait to see the innovative projects our educators and teams put the grant funds toward to help our students collaborate, create, think critically, and communicate. We are so appreciative of the San Angelo Schools Foundation for their decades, I think it's more than 35 years now, of commitment to our students and our staff and our support and the support of our mission and of our educators. At this time, Dr. Moran and board members, please join me in recognizing our San Angelo Schools Foundation after I call out each of the board members' names. And the board members who are here, when I call out your name, if you'll please come forward, and afterwards, we'll have a group picture. President Mike Ford, Executive Director Norine Carpenter, Brian Abernathy, Jenna Barnes, Carol Barton, Jennifer Boyd, Bridget Carr, Amy Crispin, Amy Duggan, Marissa Giesek, Crispin Graves, Lauren Harper, Ashley Hone, Dion Coolman, Tara Langerhans, Renee Orr, Giann Owens, Cecile Fluger, Corey Stewart, Terri Thomason, and Robyn Traynor. Thank you all so much.
Let's wait on the next recog, let's go to public comment, I guess? Not do the recognition until Amy gets here? Okay. All right. So we're going to go to public comments, and, Ms. Best, you'll come up regarding the TAPER report.
I'm nervous, and I have three minutes, so I'll be quick. And please know that anything that I'm speaking with with regard to the TAPER report that will include the STAR scores is not meant as a criticism, but a starting point perhaps to be able to lift SAISD out of the ditch we appear to be in with regard to at-meets-grade level or above scores. Now, I know SAISD and all scores in Texas will get a pass for getting to the point of being at approaching grade level or above. This is a very long report, and it was revised this week, so reading through it twice is tough, but you can see it doesn't move very much between the two reports. And what we get at approaches grade level or above, if you follow those numbers from third grade to the end of eighth grade, those kids don't catch up, right? So we end up in high school with those kids also having difficulty. So when we look at the numbers under that report, starting on page nine of 33, working it's on way down for a couple of pages, you can see that third grade to eighth grade, it's very difficult to find kids who are at grade level at the end of their school year who are moving on above 40%. And that's, I understand, a difficulty, but we're going to be talking about bonds to build new buildings, and we're going to be talking about new curriculums that are going to come in and help, and really, we have to have a plan on how it's going to help. I don't know what lifts us up, but we're an extraordinary community. We have extraordinary access to resources with Angelo State and the city and county. All of us know people there who are, we're just a tremendous community, and I think we have the opportunity to do better. Lifting out of the STAR report, I'm going towards the back of it now, and forgive me because, you know, I get to high school, and I look at eighth grade and ninth grade passage rates on just, and of course, Algebra I, at-meets-grade level or above, only 19% of our kids are at grade level in Algebra I. So you get to high school, and you start taking your ACT and your SAT scores, and you've got difficulties. So we get into that, and we get the scores from TEA that talk about the 87.4% of seniors in the class of 2023 who took the ACT, I'll leave out the SAT for time. Only 9.1% of our kids were at a 24 or above, and if you're putting a kid into college like I am, you know scholarship money and acceptance is, 24 is in the dump, right? So effectively, what that means is, restated, 91% of our students could not get 70% of the ACT English questions correct, 56.6 of math, or 65% of the reading questions correct. Those are seniors taking this test. When we go on and we move on from that, we look at US News and World Reports and AP talking about AP courses. At Lakeview this year, only seven AP courses are authorized according to AP, now, and College Board. That may be wrong, and please correct me if it is, but it's the only source of information I have. Of that, only 16% of kids at Lakeview are participating, and of those seniors who have taken at least one AP exam in their four years, only 1% has passed it. 1%. We have to do better. I didn't even get to Central. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Best.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Virgil Pasetti regarding the San Jacinto closure and the bond.
So you're going to vote on closing San Jacinto today because of safety and age. But you know what? Our third oldest elementary is Santa Rita, and apparently, it's just fine. So it's approaching 100 years old, no problems there, I wonder why. But San Jacinto, Reagan, mysteriously, safety issues. You've known since 2002 that foundation needed to be fixed. According to your budget, you didn't fix it because I've dug through everywhere. You did that. So when you were voting to close it down, you did that. And every January 21st, I'm going to remind everybody in this community, you did that. You might close it down, but we're not going to forget. The bond, you want $400 million, and I noticed Parker Hills here, they're all dressed up and ready to go because they're going to get 10% of it. I don't want to give these guys $40 million. We don't have a lot of money in this community, so we're going to give them $40 million right off the top, and then they're going to give us another Fannin, $465 a square foot, and it's running six months behind, and they're already having issues with it. Meanwhile, right up the street, they built a Chick-fil-A in three months. So you built eight classrooms and a bathroom, no kitchen, none of the high-dollar stuff, $465 a square foot, and when you ask them about it, oh, that's commensurate with normal things. I don't trust them, and I don't want to give them $40 million. We can't trust you with $400 million. You have the same team in place that couldn't get Fannin and McGill done, and now you want to give them $400 million? They couldn't even handle $20 million. You need to have an engineer on staff, you need to have a project manager on staff, you need to have someone that actually knows something about construction on staff before you go begging the community to give you $400 million. The tax assessor here told me that the whole community, Tom Green County is assessed at $7 billion, and you want to give you half a billion dollars to build a couple of schools? Y'all are so far out of range. Y'all sit up here on your high horse, and you sit there with your gavel, and you think you're, you know better than everybody? $465 a square foot? We could have built a house in bentwood for every one of those classrooms. You know what, kids? Instead of this thousand-square-foot classroom that costs $465 a square foot, we got you a house in bentwood because it was cheaper. And now you want to give these guys $40 million? No, thank you. No, thank you. And remember, when you vote tonight to close that school, you did that.
Thank you, Mr. Pasetti. All right. Next up is Brent Woodworth, topic of San Jacinto.
My name is Brent Woodworth, and I am the father of a student at our community elementary, San Jacinto. I am here once again fighting desperately for my daughter and my neighborhood. I shouldn't have to. My neighborhood turned out en masse two years ago when administration and this board pulled this stunt before. At that time, we had neighborhood meetings and numerous board meets to make the decision. Your strategy has greatly changed this time. As this decision is making, is being made with barely a whisper, you obviously know that this decision stands in stark contrast with the wishes of the city and, most importantly, the San Jacinto community. Superintendent Moran last week spoke of our school as an old sightseeing attraction and only a monetary number. It is nothing of that. San Jacinto is the pride and pillar of our neighborhood and children. It is not a numbered value, but rather a monument that has stood the test of time for 118 years. Two years ago, at the, at these, at these, those meetings, administration said that San Jacinto had selling issues that needed to be addressed. In two years, what has anything, if anything, has been done to rectify a known problem? I spoke with Moran personally, and he cannot answer that. He even admitted that the earthquake was most likely not the primary cause of the structural issues. So I ask you again, what was done? Or was this the plan all along? Pretend like, pretend like you represent our city, but instead, you bide your time waiting for a scapegoat to get you out with what you really wanted all along. Since San Jacinto has been combined with Reagan, it has been an absolute nightmare. I lose hours every week of quality time with my daughter, and she has to be bused to a neighborhood that is not in her own. We have lost so much of our contact with our teachers, they're not there when we pick her up. And this is not alone my sentiment. A quick search of social media will find many, many other parents, not only in San Jacinto, but also Fannin McGill expressing these same concerns. Your job as board member is not to represent the administration and simply relay it to that to the public. Your job is to represent your voters and ensure administration knows what we want. You unfortunately have lost the public's trust representing administration. This is why we are pulling our children out in favor of charter schools, and will continue to deny bonds. Two years ago, our neighborhood board could not be bothered, our neighborhood board member could not be bothered to attend our neighborhood meetings. She refused to voice our neighborhood's concerns on the, on the closure, and when many of us tried to contact her, we were instead put in contact with a silver-tongued ambulance-chasing lawyer. We were not represented, but we still fought. If you want the city's trust, you have to start listening to us against administration's wishes. I heard that, that woman from admin speak here a few months ago, telling you that it is in the school's best interest to do whatever they say to do. That made me absolutely sick to my stomach. And if it isn't yours, it's your responsibility to ask yourself if you actually represent the voters, and if you actually deserve to sit here tonight. One more page.
No, that's.
I'm here to speak. You're here to listen to me. I am still speaking. (Inaudible) Georgetown, Texas, a city that same size that we will, that...
Be happy for you to email me all of your comments so you can get into me. I'm sorry. Thank you. If, next up is Mrs. Cardenas.
I know most of you remember me from two years ago, along with a lot of the parents that are sitting in here. Thanks, everybody, for showing up last minute. I found out that this would be on the agenda two hours ago, and I thought right away, oh my God, I have to prepare something, I'm not ready. But I am ready because I live there, I live this, I know how it's going to, I know how it's already affected me and all the parents who message me. Carlo, what are we going to do? What's going to happen? I don't know. All I can do is speak to you all. And I'm glad, I'm glad that my mother's here in the audience today, and she taught me one very important thing that I'm not noticing from our leader there, is when somebody's speaking to you or you're speaking to someone, you look at them in the eye. It's respect. This is very near and dear to all of us, Dr. Moran. I was lucky to be a part of the facilitators advisory board that presented that, the bond topics to you all. That was awesome. I was proud to be a part of that. You told me, in confidence, I don't know if it was in confidence or not, but I've never heard you say publicly what you told me. You said, "I wanted to build a new elementary school, but the board doesn't want to." How come you haven't said that to the community out loud? Now, San Jacinto is old, yes, but why don't we deserve something new? Why can't we get something new for Reagan and San Jacinto? We're not asking for a name change, change the colors of our school, change the name, this and that. Why can't we have something for our kids? It's very important for our community to have a neighborhood school. Now, the only thing I keep seeing is dollar signs. We're going to save $700,000 if we combine schools, and then what's going to happen next? We don't know. Is Dr. Moran going to be here? I don't know. I hope so. But, you know, they come and go. It is what it is, but you guys stay here. You guys, y'all's roots are here. Now, I'm very lucky and blessed to be in the profession now that I always wanted to be. I'm a coach now, and I know that the best coaches, I've had many coaches, the best coaches are the ones with experience. You can open a textbook all day long, be a good test taker, pass, get your degree. The best coaches are the ones with experience. I live the experience of what it has caused to, to combine the schools together, guys, and I'm very blessed. You cannot imagine the other parents, what they go through that are not in the same spot that I am in, that God has put me in now. It is hard, very hard. Now, I don't know what you're going to vote tonight, but I feel like you all know what's right and wrong. We can do better. We're with SAISD eight-plus hours a day. How come my friends and my peers have the lowest dropout rates? All kinds of negative things in our life. Why has SAISD not built our community up? We have the opportunity now, guys, to not have people say, "Oh, they failed us again." Let's do this together. Okay? I'm everywhere right now, I'm everywhere, but I have so much to say. Thank you, guys, for listening to us. The principal, my parents, everybody, thank you, guys. And thanks for looking at me. (Applause).
We're going to go back and do recognition of the San Angelo ISD School Board, and Shannon, or no, Soon's going to help us with that.
I'll just make comments from the board desk here, but the, the month of January really is a time for us to pause and thank the board members for their service. I think it's pretty obvious that being on the school board takes time, takes thoughtfulness and energy, and, and volunteerism. You don't get paid for it, but I speak on behalf of the staff and the community when I say thank you for your service to the board, thank you for your dedication to be here twice a month at least, and to work through issues on behalf of all of the kids in SAISD. And so we have a couple of things for you. Mr. Miras, do we have those on, on the board desk there? We'd like to present the board, and Dr. Brandon, can you help? We're just going to hand the board one each. These were handmade by our students in the woodshop, but it's a charcuterie board that we'd like to hand you. Hopefully, hopefully you'll enjoy it as much as the kids did in making it, I'm sure, but in the shape of Texas, thank you, board members. Yep. Yep. We're going to take a picture. Okay. Where would you like us?
Where would you like us?
Why don't we stand? Do you want to stand down here, or you standing? Yeah, let's go down there.
(Inaudible).
We are going to go into executive session quickly under real property, which is code 551.072, and we'll be back. We are going to go into executive session quickly under real property, which is code All right. We are back from executive session. We took no actions, we made no votes. We're going to move forward with our agenda. The next is a financial audit presentation, and Dr. Brandon, I think he's going to start us off on that.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, members of the board. Each year, the district engages an independent certified public accountant to audit its financial reports. This audit then must be presented to the Texas Education Agency. The firm of Aid Bailey was engaged to perform the audit for fiscal year 2024. This evening, Jeremy Stevens, CPA and partner, Aid Bailey, is with us to make that presentation.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm Jeremy Stevens with Aid Bailey. Our firm has completed the audits of... Additionally, are not reporting any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting. So, like I said, a, a good, 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 clean audit. So, that being said, get into the, the bound packet and the, the, the presentation as well. Our audit report starts on page number 11, goes on over through page number four. Really, it makes kind of four main points, which I've summarized up on the slide. First of all is our opinion at the top of page number 11. Stay certain, our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the district. So, this is what's known as a unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements. It then goes on to describe our basis for our opinion, which is that we conducted our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and we believe that the audit evidence we have obtained is sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our opinion. It then describes management's responsibilities for the financial statements, which is management is responsible for the preparation and the presentation of these financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and management is responsible for the design and implementation of internal controls. And lastly, on page number 12, it described our responsibility as auditor, which our responsibility is to express an opinion as to whether the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. There's some additional narrative regarding our approach to internal controls, which is that we gain an understanding of the district's internal controls to design our audit procedures. However, do not test them to an extent that allows us to express an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. So, we're not expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. Now, moving on to some of the basic financial statements themselves, starting with the statement of net position, starts on page number 23, goes on over through page number 24. This particular statement provides a snapshot of all assets and liabilities of the district as of August 30, 20, 31st, 2024. It's presented on what's known as the full accrual basis of accounting, so it includes all assets and liabilities of the district, including those that are long-term in nature. So, it includes your capital assets, includes liabilities for bonds payable, includes a liability for the net pension, a net pension liability, as well as the net other post-employment benefit liability. I've got a very, very summarized slide up there with a comparative column for 2023. You'll see under this basis of accounting, total assets at year-end, about $315.5 million. Previous fiscal year is about $312.4 million. Total assets did increase a little bit year over year, about, about $3 million, but pretty, pretty, pretty comparable year over year. As far as liabilities of the district, about $195 million this year. Previous fiscal year is about $206 million. So, liabilities did decrease about $15 million year over year. A large part of that is just paydowns of your bonds payable, kind of regular debt payments of, as those have been made, those liabilities have drawn down. If you add it up, you get your net position at year-end, which is the amount that the assets exceeds liabilities. About $120 million in the current fiscal year, it's about $106 million in the previous fiscal year. Second statement I'll touch on is the balance sheet of governmental funds, which is on page number 27 of the bound packet. Again, this particular statement provides a snapshot of assets and liabilities of the district. However, it's presented on what's known as the modified accrual basis of accounting. So, it focuses on current assets and current liabilities. Does not include capital assets, does not include liabilities for bonds payable or for your net pension or net OPEB liabilities and so forth. This particular statement, this focuses on current obligations and the district's resources to meet those obligations. Under this basis of accounting, you'll see total assets at year-end were about $101 million. Previous fiscal year is about $108 million. So, assets did decrease about $7 million year over year, primarily those investments have decreased year over year, down to about $11 million this year from about $23 million in the previous fiscal year. Total liabilities of the district, pretty comparable, about $26.7 million this year, is about $25 million last fiscal year. So, if you add it up, your fund balance is the amount that your assets exceeds liabilities, about $74.6 million this fiscal year, and then it was about $83.4 million in the previous fiscal year. On this particular slide, I've summarized that fund balance across all funds based on the various categories, so you can kind of see how those have changed year over year. Again, you'll see the total fund balance did decrease about that $8.8 million year over year to about $74.6 million. Largely, you'll see that, that reduction is in the committed fund balance, and that is a fund balance that has been, was previously committed for, for construction activities, was spent down, so that committed balance did draw down a little bit. Fund balance of the general fund, which is the fund balance, kind of the fund regular operating activities, about $64.5 million this fiscal year, is about $74.4 million last fiscal year. So, did decrease about $9.9 million year over year, again, largely to the, due to those reductions in those amounts that had been committed for construction activities, reduced down to about that $11.7 million this fiscal year. The unassigned fund balance is the amount of the fund balance that's available to the district to fund kind of regular operating activities. Generally, I, I hear the recommendation to keep at least a, a three-month reserve in your unassigned fund balance based on the general fund expenditures. If you compare the August 31st, 2024, unassigned fund balance of that $51.5 million to the average monthly expenditures for the 2024 fiscal year, it's about 4.3 times your average monthly general fund expenditures. So, you are a little bit ahead of what I hear as that minimum reserve for your unassigned fund balance. And the last statement that I'm gonna touch on is the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance on page number 29. Basically, the income statement of the district. This first slide summarizes revenue sources of the district, pretty comparable year over year. Total revenue is about $174 million. This fiscal year is about $175 million in the previous fiscal year. If you look at the individual categories, you will see that federal program revenues have decreased a little bit year over year, down to about $31 million. Again, all those ester funds starting to run out a little bit, kind of, so that's federal funding's kind of dovetailing a little bit as those dry up a little bit. State revenues have increased, and then that was offset by a reduction in the, that local revenue. But total revenues, like I said, pretty, pretty comparable year over year. It's just kind of the, the different sources changed up a little bit. As far as expenditures of the district, about $184 million in the current fiscal year. It's an increase of about $21 million year over year. If you look at the individual expenditure categories, biggest part of that increase is in your capital outlay. Again, as that committed fund balance was, was spent down, those capital expenditures showed up. About $16.7 million in the 2024 fiscal year, is about $2.3 million in the 2023 fiscal year. So, that's where a big portion of the increase in expenditures is at. Overall, each expenditure category did increase a little bit year over year, but we are in a, a rising price environment. And that was everything for the basic financial statements. There's two other reports that we issue, which are in the very back of that bound copy. The first is on page number 122, and it is our report on internal control over financial reporting and non-compliance. Again, this report reiterates that we're not expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of internal controls. However, if we did report any material weaknesses or any significant deficiencies or any instances of non-compliance, this is the report that it would be in. Again, happy to report that there are no such items. And the last report is our report on compliance required by the Uniform Guidance. This is our single audit report. Each year, as a part of our audits, we look at the federal programs and determine which federal program is to be tested as a, as what's known as a major, major program. And then we perform tests of that program so that we can determine and express an opinion as to whether the district complied with the requirements of that program. This year, we tested the child nutrition cluster. The opinion on that is found at the top of page number 124. Basically, states that in our opinion, the district complied with the requirements of that major program. So, again, it's an unmodified or a clean opinion on compliance as well. And that is everything that I have. So, with that, I'll open it up. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Mr. Stevens, thank you for your work with our staff here and commend our staff, Dr. Brandon and his crew, for assistance in helping you get there. But in the, in the end run, we did get an unmodified or a clean report, which is about, which is, which is not about, it is the best you can get as far as an audit is concerned for a school.
Correct. Yes, it was an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Any other questions for Mr. Stevens? Thank you for being here.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Moving forward, we're gonna go with Alan Wolfe from Park Hill Architects with an update.
He asked if we could skip down and take action.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. Dr. Moran, members of the board. I'm sorry.
We can do it either way.
Oh, yeah.
It'd be an action item B if you want to.
Yeah, we can do that. All right, we're gonna, so Mr. Stevens can get on the road with it being cold and stuff. We're gonna skip real quick. Sorry. Mr. Wolfe, we're gonna go to action item B, which is page 58. And do I have a motion to approve the August 31st, 2024 annual financial report and the auditor's opinion?
Dr. Kingman, the move to approve the August 31st, 2024 report, annual financial report and the auditor's opinion.
So, a motion from Mr. Dindel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second for Mr. Gallegos. Any other board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. Motion passes, 7-0. All right. Thank you for being here. Now, Mr. Wolfe, update, please.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman, members of the board. I'm gonna go through just a, a summary of what we've been doing for the last several months. I wanted to start with just a, a thank you, and I know a couple of our advisory committee members are here. An incredible effort put forth by your citizens committee. You can see how many meetings and hours donated, just as you, you, the board, have done. They also have donated several hours. So, this proposal that you're gonna see this evening, and I know that you've received their recommendation at your previous meeting, is really a, a proposal by the committee and, and for your citizens and your students. I was just gonna go ahead and summarize the projects, and this, I'm not gonna read every line or every line of text, but it's broken down into five different categories. So, safety and security, these are high priority things, like the public address systems and, and communications, your, your comms in your building, targeted security fencing and things like that. There's a new construction item that we're gonna talk about a little bit later, I know, which is the Glenn Middle School replacement. There are additions and renovations at both Central High School and at Lakeview High School. And you can see the categories of those work items between the, the two high schools. And then there's also a line item for right sizing elementary schools. So, this is continued work at, at both Fannin and McGill to, to finish out the master plan that we had discussed back in 2022, but it also addresses a, a major need at Crockett Elementary School with the, with the cafeteria. Moving on, capital renewal through the work of, of AJ and Scott and Tony and their team and Jason, going through the highest priority capital renewal projects for HVAC, fire alarm replacements, and, and electrical panels. There's also quite a bit of plumbing. I've got a little matrix in, in a minute that, that'll be in your packet that you can see the breakdown of each campus for that. It's also important to recognize those physical needs that we experience within the buildings are also extended in some of the athletic facilities, predominantly things like locker rooms. And so, you'll see a, an amount for each to address those things, both at Central and at Lakeview, but also at the middle schools. So, the middle schools have needs you can see there as well. There was also some discussion in some of the facilities at Lakeview, for example, at the baseball and softball field, don't have a concession and restroom building that serve those facilities. So, you can see, you can see those listed as well. So, when we come, come down to the total, we've broken this down by category. So, you have safety and security, new construction, the additions, renovations, capital renewal projects, and then the athletic renovations and improvement projects or those repairs we talked about and listed earlier. This, again, was all, all totals up to four, a little over $402 million. I think it's really important to point out that there were other lists of needs that the, the citizens committee worked through. These projects got a supermajority of the vote from the citizens committee. So, it's not even just a 50% from them. These got a supermajority. So, five out of eight tables had to, had to vote for that, which I think is a really powerful process. They were very diligent in how they were trying to prioritize funds. As you all know, the, the cost of construction and repair have escalated since the last time a bond was approved in 2008. And so, these are facility needs that they identified and they prioritized. There, I know that your advantage is gonna talk a little bit about this. There's some choices that you have in how you go about packaging bonds. You can do them in a single proposition, or you can do them in separate propositions. There is a little bit of overlap in the, in the projects that were identified by the committee, specifically at Glenn for the locker room areas there. And so, there's a choice that you have. It's about $6 million worth of locker room renovations that are needed there. And if you have a, a new Glenn Middle School as part of your bond package, that would obviously be something that you wouldn't, wouldn't have to do. There's different options that you, you can see there, or you'll see on the next slide that you, you have to do. If you break it down as one proposition and take that $6 million out, it's $397 million. If you split it into two propositions and leave that $6 million at, at Glenn to address all the locker room issues and plumbing issues that you have, you can see the breakdown would be a little under $281 million as a proposition A. And if you included Glenn Middle School as a proposition B on a separate prop, $122 million. As I mentioned, the, the $6 million that you have in Glenn, and again, these are, this is just some ideas for you to think about. This isn't a set in stone way to do it. We would certainly need to allocate that in, in the bond communication for what those funds would be utilized for. But there's different options that you could do. There's certainly a, a large amount of capital renewal that we have that we're addressing. So, there's different options with how to do that. One thing, though, is you could, you could keep the bond amount under, under $400 million if you, if you took that $6 million out, and we're addressing that with the new construction. So, those are some of the, some of the choices there that you have. I'll, I'll let that. Again, this is something just for discussion this evening. I wanted to show a little bit more detail and, and show you some of the things that were important to the facilities committee about the campuses, and we've got a, a little bit more information that shows in more detail than what you've seen before on how the, how the projects could lay out on the site, some preliminary layouts. This is just that matrix I was talking about. This is same information that was in the facility assessment presentation that, and that the citizens got as well. At Central, I'm gonna go through, I'm not gonna go through every slide, but this is basically your current configuration. We talked about the, one of the biggest things that, that was discussed by the citizens committee was the amount of travel time across campus and trying to address and save instructional time. I'm gonna keep going through this and just kind of show what a first phase could look like. This is the same information that the citizens committee received, but in a more three-dimensional graphic. The, the project that you saw earlier was replacing the Bernhardt Theater. There's many, many issues that we discussed with the facility assessment about that. I know that's been something that's been discussed by the board before and the citizens committee before. Also, the construction of a, of a gymnasium and a replacement cafeteria to deal with, deal with the physical needs that you have there and the, the, the number of kids who have to eat outside, especially during inclement weather. There's a way to do this that you'll see in a minute where we can share all those facilities together so they work well when you're having an, an event after hours, whether that be for a basketball game or whether that be a performance. So, one of the things we talked about as well is just, security was a big, a big topic, and how can we make the campus go from being spread out to being contiguous? And again, this is not, this is showing how it could, how a phased replacement over time could be done. The committee really wrestled with the replacement of Central, and so we wanted to show how that could be done over time. This, again, is not a set in stone. This is just what could be done. We wanted to prove out that it would one of the things we talked about as well is just, security was a big, a big topic, and how can we make the campus go from being spread out to being contiguous? And again, this is not, this is showing how it could, how a phased replacement over time could be done. The committee really wrestled with the replacement of Central. And so we wanted to show how that could be done over time. This, again, is not a set in stone. This is just what could be done. We wanted to prove out that it would work and that this construction that you're considering as part of Phase One would, would prove out over time under this master plan idea. So this is not a final, just like these, graphics are not a final. We've put them together enough so that we have, we can verify the budget and make sure we've covered the spaces. I really appreciate the principals and the staff at all the campuses for their time to help us with the program and space programming that we have. Again, this is just a, a general graphic. It doesn't include all of the spaces that would be within those areas. I think what's great about Central is it can address a number of different programs, whether it's choir, theater, band, and you can see the gymnasium as well. Currently, your, the, the size of the facilities that you have in both are, are much smaller, in some cases, half the size of some of your peer districts. So that can create some challenges, and, and we know that there's a correlation between those extracurricular programs and fine arts that is beneficial to your academic achievement as well. Kids who are involved in more than one extracurricular activity do way better in, in school. So these facilities are important, and that's the message that we got from your citizens committee. Again, taking over some of that older construction and renovating that to expand health sciences and culinary arts was another priority of the committee. This is just what things could look like. You can see the, the number of certifications. The fine arts department also has things like technical theater certifications and things like that. So there are also those opportunities available to use those spaces for career in technology. Those are just examples of what things might look like, what a dining facility could look like, what's very comparable in other, other facilities, gymnasium spaces as well, and other support facilities. Here you can see kinda what a health sciences renovation could look like. So I'm gonna go on to Lakeview. I know many of the, the citizens committee had an opportunity to, to tour San Angelo Central, but also to tour Lakeview. We had a chance to look at the, the really tight space for the mariachi program, which is, which is growing and thriving. We looked at the welding lab. They can't weld on a flat surface because the floor slopes, things like that. And so the, the facilities committee really wanted to address those things as well over at, at Lakeview. You noticed a line item to, to address the locker rooms. The nineteen seventy-seven locker room area there has not been addressed since the original construction. So it was not part of the rebuild back in the early two thousands. So there are physical needs there that need to be addressed. Again, I'm just gonna go through some of the, some of the ways those facilities could, could look and function. You can see a quick screen capture there. So there's more than thirty million dollars there allocated to, to Lakeview. Moving on to Glenn, this was one that was really a, I think, an eye-opener for the, the committee when they walked around. Those of you who attended, attended Glenn kinda know the layout of the, of the hallways and the, the classrooms. This is the existing campus. We looked at what would, what could be done if you replaced it over time. See if I can get that to go, maybe just turn it up a little bit. It's still thinking, there we go. So it could be, it could be replaced on site, and that allows us to utilize the utilities and also keep the, the building open on time, excuse me, open during construction, pardon me. And then there's ways that we could look at the site. Certainly, there's a grade change there, as you all know, so, but the idea would be able to provide a practice football field. There's some construction there you might want to reutilize. Certainly, the, the Van Hall Building would be one with its proximity towards the, the field that you could do that with. And then these are just, these are pictures of other middle schools, of other, other districts in the area, many of whom you're familiar with. And then you can also see the, I think, one of the advantages, I know, I know, when we went through the, the gymnasiums and we went through the choir rooms and we went through the other spaces at Glenn, something like this in the hands of your, your great teachers would be, I think, something that the, the committee wanted to explore. Okay, we've, we've had a chance to, to do the first phase at Fannin, and you guys have done that. But there, as you recall from the original master plan, there were other phases to build that out, replace older construction and, and more right-size that facility. Here's the current, the current stage. You can see the eight classroom addition that just completed, looks great in there. This is the plan going for the next phase, so very similar. So McGill has a new kitchen and cafeteria. Fannin does not. So in, in that, many of you are familiar there, off of Wilson Street there, that's where the cafeteria is, it's much smaller. The, also, we wanna create a, instead of having the entry off of that street, we would like to bring that over onto the east side and provide a longer drop-off area. The site's been prepared for those things, and so this is a natural next phase that you can see. This, this is a little less than seventeen, right around seventeen million on this particular option, on this particular part. This is what the front entry could look like. This is the same rendering you guys have seen before. So I think we really got, a lot of folks were excited about this and creating a new front door for Fannin. This is what some of the spaces could look like inside, really inviting for the school. I think those who've been, who've had a chance to be inside the, the hub space over at Fannin or have been in McGill have, can see the difference and, and the smiles on the kids' faces and the staff. It's been, it's been really great to see. So let me talk real quick about McGill. The purple area here, that's what's been recently redone. It's about half of an elementary, which I know that, that you guys have done in the past. And this, this is working, working well, but we have other phases that we need to be complete or that were recommended by the citizens committee as part of continuation of the twenty twenty-two master plan. You can see adding seventeen additional classrooms. That would allow some of that older construction where the first and second grade wing is over there on the west side to be replaced, to provide additional drop-off areas so that we can keep the traffic separate, buses and cars. So you can see kinda the build-out there. And then finally, this is the same rendering you guys have seen before. I'm gonna keep going. Lastly, this is, now Crockett, back in the two thousand and eight bond, the, the exterior corridors were enclosed and it got a complete renovation. It's really a nice, it was very well done. What wasn't done was the kitchen and cafeteria. And so the, it's basically in this area in red, so the proposal is to replace that. And then there's room that, for a new, for four new classrooms on the end of the wing there. And so that, that would allow this campus to, to function long-term for the district. So that's, that in a nutshell is, is a review of the, just some more images. One of the things you have over at Lamar and some of your other campuses is a maker space. It's a very popular area for kids to, to learn, who are tactile learners, as well as the other different modalities they learn by. So really a great opportunity, I think, and I'm, I'm so excited and appreciative of all of the time that your citizens committee put in, all the time that your staff put in to get this put together. And at this point, I'll ask for any questions that you guys have, so.
Any board questions? Comments?
So just for the record, Fannin is finished.
There's, there's one area of, on the drainage on the backside there, on the, self-oriented, on the west side to, to clean out that ditch on the backside.
In other words, the indoor, all that stuff is complete?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, yeah.
It's not six months behind, thank you.
No, sir, no, they're, they're occupied and going, so.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Appreciate it.
You'll see a theme tonight. We're getting a lot of information so we can try and make good decisions with everything going forward. So next, Jeff Robert is up with an update as well.
Thank you, Dr. Keeman, Dr. Moran, Jeff Robert, our board members. Jeff Robert with Hilltop Securities. Dr. Brandon had wanted me to go over, I'm sorry, had wanted me to go over some of the financing, potential financing scenarios with you, and then also in, in talking with, with Dr. Moran and Dr. Brandon, maybe talk about separate propositions, all-in-one proposition, those type of discussions as well. So I'll start with the scenarios. Hopefully you can see this, but what we've done is I've got a three hundred and ninety-eight million dollar scenario here on this first page, just a summary. So at the top in column one, you see the three ninety-eight, and we've talked about doing two seventy-five immediately and then coming back in column four with the remaining one twenty-three in two thousand and twenty-seven, and that would meet the architects and construction folks' construction cash flow needs. For both of these, I'd assume a twenty-five-year amortization with a four and a half percent interest rate. If we were to do it right now, we'd be closer to four percent. Maximum INS tax rate there, thirty-seven twenty-five in column six, with your current point oh eight seven four in column seven, so that'd be about roughly a twenty-eight and a half cent increase. And to give you an idea, back in two thousand and eight, the maximum INS tax rate went up to thirty-one twenty-five, I believe. However, at that time, your M and O rate was a dollar four, whereas now, as I believe, it's about seventy-two and change, your M and O. So, so the overall tax rate, even though the INS would be a little higher from then back then, the overall tax rate would be quite a bit lower than what it was back in, in oh nine. The graph there below that black line at the bottom that you see there, that is, is the projected required INS tax rate for the district's existing bond, so what's outstanding right now, which will be paid off, I believe, there in two thousand and thirty-five. And you can see that's roughly at about just under ten cents where you are right now. The green line shows what the INS, or projected INS tax rate would be after that first two hundred and seventy-five million dollars issued, and then the total INS tax rate after the remaining one twenty-three is issued in two thousand and twenty-seven. And I've used, you know, again, we try to be very conservative with our assumptions, and those assumptions are interest rate. Feel comfortable with those four and a half percent rates. But also, the main assumption is the tax-based growth, and it's gonna be shown on this next page, but it's gonna be real small because it's a, a large spreadsheet. I've only assumed one percent growth for the next ten years and then half a percent thereafter. And so what happens, and what happened back in oh nine, is we used those same conservative tax-based assumptions, and that's why you saw the INS tax rate come down year to year because ultimately the actual tax-based growth outpaced what our assumptions were, which is what we want. We don't wanna, wanna take chances with taxpayer money. So here's the detail of that scenario. I know it's very difficult to see, I apologize for that, but wanted you to have all the information. In column one, that's the actual tax base for two thousand and twenty-four and fiscal two thousand and twenty-five, which is the current one we're in right now. And you can see after that in column two, I've assumed one percent for ten years and then half a percent thereafter. Your existing bonds there in column three, four, and five, total principal interest and total P and I. The, what we call ASAH, which is the additional state aid for the homestead exemption increases, there in column six. What that is, is since the state has raised the homestead exemption multiple times over the years, they've held you harmless by giving you that money to offset those, those increases in the homestead exemption. The projected principal and interest, total P and I for the first two thousand and twenty-five issuance of two seventy-three there in column seven, and then column ten, eleven, and twelve would be that subsequent issuance. And we'll come over to the tax rate there in column fifteen, and you can see what the projected INS tax rate is. And again, that number would come down if you grow more than one percent per year. Next graph shows what if you decided to split out and do two propositions? How much would each proposition cost if they were done on a standalone basis? And so the two seventy-five, if we did that immediately, you can see the max INS tax rate would be about twenty-eight and a half cents there in column four. If we did the one twenty-three standalone without that two seventy-five, it'd be about eighteen cents would be the INS tax rate, and you can see the graphs below and what that looks like. And then I did the same thing, just show the detail for both of those as well. Are there any questions on the, the numbers themselves? Can I?
Can I ask a question before?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. So if we split the bond, if we, if we called it, if we split a bond, could we still do a series in two thousand and twenty-seven? If it was split, to keep the tax rate lower for people, or would?
I think the, Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the two thousand and twenty-seven was for the Glenn project? Is that correct? So if you split it, and let's say the Glenn project did not pass, assuming that was that proposition, you would wanna still do, I believe, in order to meet his construction cash flow needs, you'd do the two seventy-three immediately.
Okay, I get, I get that question. So if, but for the hundred and twenty-three?
Right.
Part of the way with the series A and series B you were showing was?
Well, if they both pass, you could certainly still do.
You could still move them, you could still move it later.
Yes, yes, sir.
You could still stage them legally.
Yes, whether they're combined or they're two separate propositions, they both pass, you can still have the same timeline of issuance.
That's what I was trying to ask, thank you.
Yes. So with regard, the question was kinda asked was, was thoughts on, you know, splitting propositions? And full disclosure, I went to Glenn Junior High, and I went to San Angelo Central, but I would, I'd give you this opinion whether I went to Lone Star or whether I went to, to Lincoln. And I will say, I've probably been involved, that's kinda racking my brain, I've probably been involved close to two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five bond elections over the twenty-nine years I've been doing this, and I, I really couldn't think of an instance where a district split propositions for non-extracurricular or non-shared services-type facilities, if we're talking about campuses within the district. And we kinda call that à la carte propositions, where you're separating everything. And I was talking with Dr. Brandon, and I kinda said, well, if you had, let's just say for hypothetical, if you had a ten million dollar Lincoln project on one prop, a ten million dollar Lone Star on another prop, and a ten million dollar Glenn on the third prop, you know, I, I would say back when I lived here and went to Glenn, I didn't think much of Lone Star and, and Lincoln at that time. And my parents would probably say, well, we're gonna vote for the Glenn one, but we're not gonna vote for those other ones. And the Lincoln would probably say, we're gonna vote for Lincoln but not Glenn and Lone Star. And same with the Lone Star folks, and you've got people who are gonna vote against it no matter what. So my experience is when you start to separate and go to that, what I call à la carte propositions for non-extracurricular or non-shared services-type facilities, I think you increase the likelihood that it's not gonna pass. And I also think when you have a proposition that has multiple campuses being touched, I think it's rare that every voter says, I want everything in there. I think the normal thought is that, you know what, I may not be as high on these two projects, but I'm real happy that these things are, excuse me, these things are happening here, and maybe that gives them an inclination to, you know, to vote for, for that proposition. So, I mean, even before the state made changes, which forced districts to now put stadiums, fine arts facilities, standalone fine arts facilities, natatoriums, teacher housing, those have to be on separate propositions, even before they made that act or did that action in two thousand and nineteen, most districts would put stadiums on a separate proposition. But I can't think of any instance where just one campus was separated from the proposition and kinda put out there on a standalone basis. I couldn't, I couldn't think of any. So that's kinda my opinion on that. And I, and I yield, there's certainly experts on, on polling and that kinda thing that could, could maybe give you more scientific information. That's just my experience and having done it for quite some time. Any questions?
Any other board questions or comments? We're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so now we're going to zoom. Ms. Johnson from Advantage Marketing. All right, why don't we have Dr. Gomez present on the table report? And come back to. Oh. Oh, sorry. I don't have the messaging, thank you. We don't have audio yet. We don't have audio yet.
You try speaking now, make sure we can hear you. We've got to turn you up. Well, we've got the volume all the way up. Try here, should we just a moment? Okay, try that again.
Okay, good evening.
There we go. Go for it.
Okay, yay. All right, good evening, Dr. Keeman, trustees, and Dr. Moran. Thank you so much for the opportunity to join your meeting this evening and be able to visit with you guys about the upcoming proposed bond election. Travis Cramm, our Director of Client Experience, and I are excited to be here, but apologize that we couldn't be there in person. Mother Nature has her own plans, so we are appreciative that we were able to join virtually this evening. First of all, I just want to start out by saying congrats on a successful election in November 2024. I'm going to share my screen, so hopefully you can see some of these things, but we have collected some data about the election. And so just as a walkthrough in preparation for the bond, there are some things that we need to refresh on. So you've heard from the architect about the bond program, the current list of projects, and from the FA on kind of the financial scenario. So now we're going to go back into some different kinds of numbers and talk about voter analysis and what we can kind of expect to see, and then I'm going to point out how that's going to change in May, because it's not the same voters, it's not the same scenario, not the same conversation. So first of all, you can see, I'm not sure if all of you can see this, but this should be a refresher. There are four columns really represented up here. The first one on the left is the total number of registered voters broken down by age.
Right, and we're just still seeing you. We are not seeing your screen.
Oh, okay. Well, let's see. Oh, you have to share the screen refresh, sorry.
Try that, try that now.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Small details, right? Small details. Okay, let's try again. Here we go. Okay, I apologize. So there's really four columns here. The first column on the left represents the total number of voters broken down by age. And once again, you can see that the electorate in San Angelo ISD as a political subdivision is young. 51% of the voters are under the age of 49, so we would correlate those to younger voters or 18 to 49-year-olds, or parents, I'm sorry. But as you look at what happens, so let's look at the presidential election. We saw 32,000 about voters turn out, about 56%. State average was about 65%. You can see that your younger voters in this election, even though they make up 51% of the total, they only made up 42% of the turnout in the presidential election, which is obviously the highest election cycle we have every four years. Now, as we slide over and we look at a midterm, that group of voters drops to 30% of the turnout, and our voters over the age of 50 increase to 70% of the turnout. Now, that's in the governor, you know, the midterm election. Now, what happens in a low turnout, it's not on this screen, but what happens in a low turnout, so we're going to talk about some previous elections. Typically, San Angelo or typically across the state, in May and November odd year and May even year, we see about 5% of Texans vote. So 95% of people stay home in this upcoming cycle. And so it really pushes the number of voters that are turning out in these low turnout cycles. 80% of them are usually over the age of 50. And it is, and that is, that happens in large districts, urban districts, rural districts, medium, small. It's just the way that voters turn out in the state of Texas across the board. It's a very standard outcome. And one thing that can increase that is having something like a school bond election or maybe a contentious marriage raise or some kind of other proposition that helps to drive out the turnout in that cycle. And so in San Angelo, the highest in a low turnout cycle, so I'm looking at a November election right now, was about 8,000. And even in that election, 81% of the voters were over the age of 50. Lowest one I saw in the last couple of years was May of '22. 92% of the voters in that cycle were over the age of 50. So nine out of 10 people that came to the polls were what we would call mature voters. Only 7%. So remember, I said 51% of your electorate qualifies as 18 to 49-year-olds. Only 7% of those will show up. So I get a lot of times, well, our teachers will, you know, if our teachers vote, well, if our parents vote, well, those are a lot of ifs, because we know from voter behavior that even though people want to vote in these low turnout cycles, even if we get a message out and we create a lot of demand, polling in May elections is very limited usually. So that's something that we're looking at with the district and the county. But polling locations and times are very constricted in May elections. There's only seven days of early voting in May. If you can get your county to give you Saturday and Sunday and potentially open up Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 7:00, you could help younger voters make their ways to the polls and turnout. But currently, a lot of those voting times are shorter and days on the weekends, which I think we're moving toward that. Those are critical in turning out those 18 to 49-year-olds. Versus in November, even an odd year election, this coming November, we would have 12 days of early voting plus Election Day. So there's a big difference in turnout in every single cycle. One of the things we also know is we approached this election cycle about the voters in your district from your survey, is that 45% of those voters knew and believe the tax freeze message. So we have almost half. So you would think it would be 100% of all senior citizens would know and believe, but it's actually from the polling that we collected last for the Vator election for Proposition A told us that piece of information. So that's just something that we take into consideration. So I want to talk real quick about the research because I do think that it's important. For those of you who may remember, and if you haven't, I'm not going to pull it up necessarily on the screen because it's going to be a lot of clicking around, but on page 15 of that survey from July, where we did the polling for the Proposition A, you might remember that the informed position on the, once voters got information, so the prediction was 59%. And if you remember, what you won your election in November was almost right at 59%. So my point is saying that is this data was collected in July, we went through the process of running a rigorous voter education campaign, a very robust, with a lot of competition, right, from the Republicans and the Democrats and every other message that was going on out in the cyber world. And we were able to keep up what we would consider to be an informed position. That tells us that voters got the message, they got the information, and it came out. So let's, let's take a little walk down memory lane of some of the research that was collected for the bond. So I appreciate Mr. Roberts' opinions, certainly from being a student in the district and growing up there, but I want to remind you that I'll use, I'll use kind of a, I relayed this story, my own experience from being on the board when I was in Georgetown and being on a bond committee. And when I was in that community, I knew everyone whose opinion mattered in making directional generational decisions, but I didn't know everyone. I didn't know everyone who voted. And so what this research does for us is it, it gives us that extra layer of insight and assurance so that we can get a read on everyone in the community. And then it's skewed toward the turnout of the cycle that we're in. So it takes that opinion and then it says, okay, well, if only people of this age or people in this area or any of those dimensions, which we have a lot of, which I'll show you in a moment, if only those people voted, what could we expect to happen? And how much information does a voter need so that they can be confident when they enter the ballot box? So this was one of the things that had come up so that we could help the committee, if you remember, make these really tough choices, because we're now at somewhere around $400 million. And when we were constructing this committee process and when we were building a bond proposal, we were trying to determine, okay, well, how do we know, how do they know, you know, where's the line? Where's the line of their comfort level and where's the line of the rest of the voters and the rest of the community? So this was one of the slides of many that was presented, but the reason I'm showing this is this is why this conversation about splitting Glenn Middle School has come out, because of the major project areas that were presented to all the voters in the community and then kind of skewed toward these older voters, this is what they told us about their preferences. So it doesn't mean that these things are, you know, it's a lightning rod for a no, but you can see when we say which project do they least prefer, out of all, all the sentiment out there, over a third of the voters said, just not interested in this project. So when they tell us that, then it makes us have to take like a timeout and say, okay, well, what does that mean if we move that project into a bond? What could we expect to happen? And this is the other piece of this, is it's a $122 million project, but it in and of itself is not, it's not the only thing that should be considered, because if you recall, the best position when we tested the total cost was $170 million. Now, remember, I'm not the pollster. I'm not Matt, so I can't interpret his research. I'm interpreting it now, but not the way he would, but I didn't construct it, but I do trust it. And what this tells us at $170 million is that we're at 50/50. We're at 50/50 at $170 million. Now, if we do the work in the campaign and we're working with voters, and remember, 80% of these voters are over the age of 50, and only about 5% of voters are going to naturally turn out. If we have an active, robust community group, they could actually move that needle to the turnout, could actually be somewhere between 10% to 15%, but that wasn't present in the last election cycle. So we can't really know for sure if we can trust that we have enough effort or resources to move the needle to work the turnout, to get to a better position. So at $170 million, you can see right here, I mean, he says, this indicates a close election. We're now considering $370 million plus. So the reason why Glenn Middle School, and I, you know, I, like, once again, I really appreciate the experience that Mr. Roberts has, but I also have some experience in this area, and we have had success in districts where they are now, since 2019, is way in the rearview mirror. People are getting more creative and putting things in a second prop, for instance. And Pampa ISD, they had a lot of projects, just like you, and they, their surveys showed that their community would only support up to a certain amount. They also couldn't bond over a certain amount because they didn't have the tax base, but they were expecting and hoping to get a factory, fertilizer factory in the district. If that fertilizer factory went through and announced their plans to build, it would add enough to their tax base to be able to do all of these projects. So we actually did a Proposition B that was a ghost proposition. It would never be sold unless this factory announced that it was coming to the community. So I use that as kind of a, that's the most maybe rare version of using that, but we use it more and more, especially when we have really great data like this, to help shape the proposal and in honor the fact that, you know, this is what we know to be true. The last survey came out when it was done, you know, almost six, five months before Election Day, to the percentage that it was predicted. And so the reason why, the reason why that we were kind of looking at moving Glenn Middle School to Proposition B is it's not necessarily about voter choice. What voters are responding to in this, this survey is not the 170, the 270 or 370, it's the cost per month. And what we know is when we hit somewhere around the high 20s, 27, 28, we start to see a price resistance, and especially since COVID. That level of price resistance for the monthly impact is what they're processing on. The monthly impact has actually come down. It used to be somewhere in the low 30s. Now, the high 20s, low 30s is about, about the highest that they, you know, they want to have that conversation. So what you're seeing here is them responding, and if my math is correct, and Jeff can correct me, but at $398 million, your monthly in Proposition A is about $35.64. And if, if I could read the screen, because it was crooked for me, but I believe what he put on the screen earlier, if the two were broken out, is Proposition A is now $24.10 a month. Proposition B, which would be, I, once again, I believe, I was trying to read it on the screen crooked, but I believe it was $11.54. So voters aren't going to come in and choose the cheapest option, and they probably don't make as emotional decisions about these than you would think. And I'm going to remind you why. It's because the voters that we're going to see in this election cycle have probably lived here and voted and rejected a series of bonds over their entire grown-up life. And they are the most reliable voters, these May voters and these upcoming November voters, that you have, the most educated voters. So I've never seen them, and I've never seen them in all of the propositions that I've done, I've done almost 150. I've never seen voters make a choice based on cost. They make it, they make it when it's on cost, when it's too expensive to consider or afford, or they don't have enough information to where they understand the cost. But usually when we do surveys when bonds fail, it's not, the first one is not the cost. There are people that don't want to pay the tax, but those are the no voters that are baked in to the 40% or, you know, in the old days, 35% of no voters, you know, now that number is a little bit different. So I just wanted to bring this up tonight in terms of how you start to think about constructing this, because you do have options. You can put everything in A and just all the chips in at $35.64, almost $36 a month. You have that option and you can do that. But if the escalation or the risk of pushing any or all of these projects into the future is too high, for whatever reason, then you do have the option, and I'm happy to visit more in depth with you if you want to, but you do have that option to break these out and take some of the financial, the monthly perception of that off of the voter by putting these into some smaller pieces so that they can consider it. And that's, one of the other things I was going to point out is, from a messaging standpoint, we really have some really great opportunities with the bond that are really different from the Proposition A election. So Proposition A, we're still talking about students and teachers and teaching and learning and barriers and opportunities that you're having in the district with your MNO budget issues and how this, that election, you know, could be a solution to some of those problems. So we do the same thing in the bond, but one of the, I think, really cool thing about this process, and especially with your committee, is the development of a master plan. And so as, you know, Park Hill and Alan and RJ have built with your, with you and your committee this long-term master plan, you've now got these projects phased up and teed up to roll out, and they're prioritized as to how they would roll out. So this is an opportunity for me and you guys to get to explain to the voter that we have this plan, this long-term plan, and this is our intention, so that as we start to explain where projects, like the athletic projects or Glenn Middle School or School, or any of the other projects that might be in here, that they, if they were to be pulled out and broken out, they can still be packaged as a whole for consideration. And I'll sum that up by saying, we also, in Joshua ISD, they had failed two bond elections and had a Proposition A approach, and they pulled out because they're a growing district and the tax impact was fairly high. So they went from one proposition to five, we passed all five. Longview ISD did the same thing. They broke out the propositions a little bit, passed all five at 60% after failing two times. So there are examples of this, and like I said, I just wanted to give you some options for consideration and match those options, the project plan, the data that Jeff has shared with the data that you've, the research that you've paid for, so that you can kind of start to shape in your mind how this can be presented to the community for their consideration. If there's, I'm happy to answer any questions, although Jessica, you may have to interpret the questions.
Does anyone have any questions? So if we have a committee, when, obviously, we didn't go to every committee meeting, Rana, because of...
Hang on a second, I'm going to turn you towards the board direction.
Okay, and I just pushed something on my screen. Give me one second, I'm not exactly sure what I just did here. But I made a boo-boo. Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay. So if, if a committee comes and says, hey, we want these projects, and then that board doesn't go after all those projects simultaneously, do you still get that committee bought in to helping you get your bond passed? Is that, can you hear me?
Were you able to hear his question?
Yes, and it's a great question. So I would say when I started doing elections almost 15 years ago, the standard was a Proposition A approach. It was take the committee recommendation, you know, a unanimous approval. And as, as the, honestly, in the last five years, as the school finance scenario has changed, and there's decisions that boards have to make that, about land purchases and other things that impact that can't necessarily always be presented to a committee, we do have the ability, or we do have scenarios where boards take the proposal and they can adjust it. So in this scenario, you've got options where you can take the full package that they came back with and keep it in one, or like we talked about, and break it up. Or you can push some of those projects to the future into the master plan. So let me make sure what I'm saying, clarify that. So the master plan, the great thing about having a master plan and really building the bond proposal as part of this long-term vision and community-built plan, is that if a project isn't placed in the bond today, that project doesn't go away. It just gets moved to a future date, along unfortunately with its escalation and inflation. So its cost naturally goes up. And that's part of what's communicated to the voters. Should you decide to, to do it as a Proposition A or to split the projects, one of the things they need to know is, hey, if you don't, if you choose not to select all of these and approve all of these and vote for all of these, then just know that as you do that, you're pushing these projects into the future and you're voting basically to say yes to the same thing, it's just going to cost you more. Because these types of needs don't go away. I mean, you've been accruing them for, you know, 16 years. So that's part of the communication to get a voter to see that if you just pick Prop B or Prop D, Prop A and C and, you know, B are still needed. It's just, they're going to cost you more in the future and they could have other, other issues in implementing those projects that we don't even know about today. So it gives the voter that choice, because a lot of times when voters come to the ballot box, they perceive that if they vote yes, and they're, you know, basically saying, I'm in agreement with everything that the community and the board has developed, and I'm, you know, I'm going to vote for this. And if I vote no, nothing happens. And that's the biggest piece of what we have to explain is there's a lot of things that happen when projects aren't approved. And so in this case, the first explanation to answer your question is to go back, you know, explain to the committee that, one, the research is there, you know, and you have these options if you choose to exercise them, and that you are going to pursue the projects, but you have to have, you have to know that there's a certain amount of success that's in, that's, that you could expect, a probability of success. Otherwise, all of the projects, if the whole Proposition A fails, all of the projects, along with all of the escalation and inflation, moves into a future election cycle. And every election cycle is another six months, which is somewhere probably, Mr. Wolf is there, correct me, but probably somewhere between 4% and 6% every six months. That's now traveling along with all of those projects. So, yes, so is it appropriate to, is it great to, you know, take the recommendation and push it forward? But, yes, but there's nothing wrong also with having that long-term view and saying, we're going to have to do this a different way, or we're going to perceive it, pursue it a different way. I think they would honor that and respect it. I don't think, I know, I see them do it all the time, but boards more and more make changes to committee recommendations. And honestly, more and more, they add things to the proposal that committees are afraid to add, like stadiums or an auditoriums or practice facilities. So it's usually, you know, there is more of that now than there ever has been since 2019.
Any other board questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Let us know if you have any other questions.
All right. Now, Dr. Gomez, we're going to do the public hearing on the taper report, 2324.
I think they're going to switch over. Okay. So Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, and members of the board, this evening, we will discuss our district's annual report using the PDF version of the taper, which you all received, released by the Texas Education Agency on December 12. According to statute, a public hearing must be held within 90 calendar days of receiving that PDF taper. Within two weeks of the public meeting, each district must widely publish its annual report. We will do so by posting on our website, and hard copies will be available to any stakeholders who may not have access to the internet. The PDF version of the Texas Academic Performance Report includes only major data points. And for it to only include major data points, it's 33 pages long. So I just want to point that out. But it is designed to allow districts to fulfill their public hearing notification requirements. It provides additional data through, or, excuse me, the state provides additional data through what is referred to as the Texas Performance Reporting System, or TPRS, because we have a lot of acronyms in education. The difference between the taper and TPRS is the taper takes a snapshot date, then testing information for students that tested on a campus or within the district. Whereas the Texas Performance Reporting System is more comprehensive and data is available on a rolling basis. Also, the TPRS integrates additional state and federal reporting requirements into a single reporting system, so it's the most comprehensive system the state puts out. Both of these, the TPRS and the taper, pull together a wide range of information on the performance of students in each school and district in Texas every year. Performance is shown disaggregated by student groups, including ethnicity and socioeconomic status. And the reports also provide extensive information on school and district staff, programs, and student demographics. There are some updates for the 2324 taper. There are currently no A through F ratings. Those remain pending and subject to change based on judicial rulings. There is, however, the state's final accountability manual, which was posted May 9, and that can be found online. Now, because this report is so extensive, the state releases a glossary, which is available primarily for staff, however, it's also available to the public. So I'll just show you briefly. I said our district taper report is 33 pages. The glossary alone is 48 pages. And I just point that out because there's some very specific academic language. For example, taper will measure star performance by grade level, subject, student group, and performance level. It will measure school progress, academic growth, and accelerated learning. And it breaks down what academic growth and accelerated learning means. Bilingual education, ESL, participation rates, attendance rates, annual dropout rates, graduation rates by cohorts, including those graduating on a recommended high school program, a distinguished achievement program, and a foundation high school program. It also reports college career military ready, including college-ready graduates, career military-ready graduates, then college career military readiness indicators. In terms of student information, it gives you enrollment. There's a lot of discussions about facilities and rightsizing. So this report gives comparisons, again, not only in SAISD, but throughout the state. You've heard a lot of conversations from the district about a rightsized elementary being closer to that 600 mark, where many of the SAISD elementary campuses are substantially smaller. So just point out the information. If at any time stakeholders are wondering about SAISD, they can pull any district across the state. Ethnic distribution, economically disadvantaged, English learners, students with disciplinary placements, at-risk, students with disabilities by type of primary disability, 504 students, students with dyslexia, retention rates, class size information. And then it goes on to give you a whole wealth of information about staff information. One of Dr. Moran's superintendent goals, and as we heard earlier from Rana, was the passing of the VADER to retain staff. So not only can you see the district's staff experience and retention rate, you can compare that with the state, along with salary information. Those are just some highlights from the glossary itself. We go back to the main report. And it's just important that stakeholders know where they can not only access our information, but have comparable data. So in summary, we will review the key components of the statute, and then we'll conclude with some highlights and some focus areas that the district is working around. First key indicator for the statute is the PMS Financial Standard Report. Had a lot of conversation, and the district continuously says they provide financial transparency. This is another way where you can see the district's finances. This is reported in the PMS Financial Standard Report from the 2223 Financial Actual Reports, and that's linked in there. This is provided by the State Funding Division. So this isn't provided by just the district alone or our auditors, it's the actual State Funding Division. It also can be accessed from the very last page of the taper report. So wanted to show you a couple of ways that you could access that information. We go back one, I'm sorry, Mr. Maris is driving for me. Okay, scroll up. So just in summary, it's going to show you, again, this is from the 2223 Financial Actual Reports. It's going to show you the district's total operating revenue from the general fund and then other funds. So you can see that there, from the total operating revenue, general fund column, and then the all funds column. And the full report can be accessed there. Just want to give you a second, because I know you have a lot of screens. Okay, it's important that I tie back to when I said the A through F ratings were pending. So a district has to report their accreditation status. Since the A through F ratings have been pending due to judicial situations the last two years, a district has to use the rating from the 22 school year. So as you see on our cover sheet of that taper report, we are accredited. It's just to clarify, though, where that data came from, since there has not been the issuance of A through F ratings the last two years. Okay? Then we're going to take just a moment. You have the full district report, because that's a requirement from the public hearing, but I want to make sure that all board members and any stakeholder watching on TV knows where they can access any campus report. So you can go to the Texas Education Agency website, they're linked in this, which will also be on our website. And you can type in any campus name or any district name in the state of Texas to get their full reports. And then again, within two weeks, that will be sooner for us, these will also be on our SAISD website after this evening. Then you can do the same on the Texas Education website for the Texas Performance Reporting System, which is the more comprehensive system that we discussed earlier, where the data is released on a rolling basis, not just taking the snapshot and then the testing window. And this is more comprehensive, as we talk further in the calendar year about federal report cards, due to, going back to that revenue and the fact that we get funds outside our general fund, we do receive federal funds. So a part of that financial transparency is showing additional information. So again, Texas Performance Reporting System for campuses and districts across the state. Each school district and each campus is required to have a district improvement plan and a campus improvement plan. A part of that entails campus performance objectives. Earlier, the very beginning of this school year, Dr. Moran presented to all of you his new superintendent board goals. Specifically, there were academic goals, there were safety goals, there was a goal of passing a VADER, doing a comprehensive salary study. That's just the executive summary of his goals. Once a district has new goals, you have to have performance objectives written to support those goals. So each campus in the district has done so with the new superintendent board goals, and those were presented to our district's community-based accountability system that we refer to, that council, CBAS, that was done in November, because that committee of over 100 stakeholders also serves as our district site-based committee. So all of that has been done, just highlighting those are reviewed. The next review for those will be done in February. But because the majority of this report is around academics, I'll specifically highlight the two academic goals that were a part of that, including the robust summer program for reading and math, and also the increased goal of students meeting their expected growth measure in grades three through eight, math and reading, English 1, English 2, and Algebra 1, as measured on NWEA or the MAP assessment. We are currently in the middle of the year administration window. We will be reporting to you all when that window closes. It closes at the end of January, so you will receive additional information. But those performance objectives tie to those board goals. Another component of statute is that each district reports on their special education intervention stage and determination status. Last year... Last year, when the state released our taper reports, our special education intervention stages were not released. These are only for districts, not for individual campuses. We have known in San Angelo ISD for the last two years that special education is what we refer to as a major focal area or a big rock. So we've emphasized a lot of resources from professional learning for our staff, for differentiation, and also in resources. We have received the 2324 determination status. We are in what's called needs assistance, because we need to increase our performance passing rate for special education students on the STAR assessments. We just met with TA last Friday. We shared our plan. While we actually had the highest performance level in the area of reading, language, arts for grades tested, our plan, which we began last year knowing that we needed to improve in that area, we made the most gains, and we explained to the Texas Education Agency that we did not want to abandon that plan and just move for a mark to improve in other content areas, because we needed more time. If you don't have strong readers, it will impact all your other content areas. The state agreed and said that there was a very well-written plan as the growth was seen from last school year. We just have continued progress to make. Also, in full transparency, as safety and security is a top priority of the school district, the other reason why we were in needs assistance for special education was because of removals of special education students for disciplin-- excuse me, disciplinary reasons. It is the district's first priority to make sure students are safe in a classroom. So if it is a mandatory violation of the code of conduct, special education or not, the student will receive the appropriate discipline consequence. But please know, for mandatory offenses and discretionary, if you have students in those subpopulations and they're removed, that can come back for a district for needs assistance. So specifically on that report, we had 2,135 students in special education with total removals for 1,114. Now, what that does for us is we look at every one of those disciplinary placements. Again, if they were mandatory, we 100% support the safety and security of the other students in the classroom, and also the safety of that special education student involved in the discipline fracture. If they were discretionary, then we look at ways in which we could possibly assign discipline through another manner, or if it needed to remain as it was. But that's how you break it down. It's just very important, because sometimes the public doesn't understand that there are special subpopulations resulting in further actions for districts. And that's one such example. Which leads into the next portion on a district giving information on violent or criminal incidents. That is something that each school district must report. These are, goes back to safety and security. In last year's report, the district had 13 terroristic threat incidents, assault of district employees, 15, and assault of non-district employees, 54. So all of those being mandatory placements, which the code of conduct was upheld because of the severity of the incident. This is not a requirement of that report. We want the education for parents in the community. Vaping or e-cigarettes has become a growing issue for a number of years. And long-term research and consequence for individuals' health, it's not fully published. But when we say we're looking at that, we're looking at ways to educate students, to educate families, this is definitely an area where it takes everyone's help. E-cigarettes, last year, there were 280 incidents. So oftentimes, those are hard conversations when an administrator has to call home. It's not about the discipline as much as it is the long-term safety of their child. And those are the conversations we want to promote with our families. And also, ways in which we're so lucky within San Angelo in this community and having strong partnerships, excuse me. ADAC is one of many that we work with on a regular basis about educating and understanding. So we just really want to stress to families to have conversations with their children, and maybe sometimes to go in their children's things when their children don't always know, to make sure that they're making wise and safe choices. Another component of the statute is that a district reports on students' performance in post-secondary institutions. So there is a report released by the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board by county and district and measured by grade point average. So for every high school, the following year, there's a report for students, letting districts know how their students did in their first year after high school. So we will give you some information to meet this requirement, specifically for Central High School. From the graduates of 2022, there were 770 graduates reported, with 399 of those not being found, meaning they could not be tracked after high school, and not found, and then 11 not trackable. There were 16 of those reported to attend an independent college and university, 84 of those reported to attend a two-year public college, and 260 of those graduates who were reported to attend a four-year public university. Then further data is available by grade point average for each one of those, with very quickly, those in two-year public colleges less than 38, had a GPA lower than 2.0, 12 had a GPA between 2.0 and 2.49, 4 GPA of 2.5 to 2.99, 11 of a 3.0 to a 3.49, and then 14 higher than a 3.5. For a four-year public university, 59 had a GPA of lower than a 2.0, 22 of a 2.0 to a 2.49, 2.5 to 2.99 was 41, 52 of a 3.0 to a 3.49, and then 81 of greater than a 3.5. So when we talk about the mission of San Angelo ISD in producing future-ready graduates, whether that be college, career, or military, there's just snapshot data as they enter their first year. For Lakeview High School, graduating class of 2022 was 179. 98 of those were not found, 2 were not trackable, 2 attended an independent college and university, 30 a two-year public college, and 47 a four-year public university. Of the two-year public college, 12 were reported to have a GPA of 2.0 or lower, 4 2.0 to a 2.49, 3 of a 2.5 to a 2.99, 5 of a 3.0 to a 3.49, 3 of higher than a 3.5. Of those attending the four-year public university, 14 had less than a 2.0, 9 of a 2.0 to a 2.49, 4 of a 2.5 to a 2.99, 10 of a 3.0 to a 3.49, and 8 of higher than a 3.5. So again, just a snapshot of future-ready graduates. Another component of the statute is that each district provides an update on its early childhood for literacy and math, and also around college career military and readiness. So as you all know, we have four sites that have pre-K. We also had restructuring of our instructional coaches. But throughout the restructuring, we still have one instructional coach that supports our early childhood, so our pre-K from the very earliest. And then this year, to really compliment and commend all of our instructional coaches working on all 15 of our elementary campuses and having content-specific support. Also, we have a director of early childhood, and she and our instructional coach both attended the Texas Association for the Education of Young Children conferences to stay current. The district is also working to meet all the indicators of a highly qualified pre-K program. So if you have not heard or seen yourself, there is a pre-K Facebook page specific to SAISD pre-K and also monthly newsletters that are going out. So we'll be getting ready to enroll. If you have anyone in the community that wishes to be a part of those programs, please share. In terms of college career military ready, CTE is a point of pride within the district. That's one way in which the district sets itself apart. I know that there's individuals in the audience who work directly with the chamber, with the workforce. We have students being hired right out of high school, and it's changing the trajectory for their families. Today, we had our CT ambassadors from our high schools down at our middle schools, talking to them about the transitions. And it's not just having conversations, hey, go down this pathway, because my friend is in there. It's also using curriculum and program to really look at their aptitudes and long-term match their strengths. The rest of the week, they will be at Lone Star and at Glenn having those conversations. So that's a lot of information, I know, very quickly. And that very extensive report on performance, let's talk about some highlights. So the state of Texas changed the STAR assessment in the 2223 school year. At the same time, there was change with an SAISD's curriculum and instructional department, and with many directors and campus leaders throughout the district as well. That very first year, the district knew that there had to be immediate training on the change of the state assessment itself. When we talk about having areas that we still want to focus on for high school, or why are kids not reading at grade level? You don't just go address it at the high school level. You have to start at the very foundational level. So 2223, a lot of training about the change in the state's expectation. Last year, district-wide, a major focus and instructional support in the primary grades, where students learn how to read. So district-wide, a new curriculum was implemented in grades K through 2 in the 2324 school year. And then this year, that has expanded all the way through 5th grade. So while the improvement in performance is not where we would like it to be by any means for all grade levels, we are already seeing improvement in the earliest testing grades in the area of reading, and most importantly, in the area of annual growth. As I'll point out, we know that our students in SAISD, we have a higher at-risk rate than the state as a whole. But when we have students in our system and we can keep them with high-quality curriculum and support with our staff, we're able to close those gaps. Attendance is another area. Attendance is reported two years out, coming out of the pandemic. This is not specific just to San Angelo ISD. It's across the state and across the nation. If students aren't in school, we can't give them what we need. Still coming out of that, taking multiple years, it will take all of our wonderful partners that we have to help really close those gaps. So while it is two years out, we've done a lot district-wide to really focus on attendance, and we're seeing some initial gains, and we'll continue to report for that. I want to point out on this report, attendance is reported for students in grades 1 through 12. And then the issue of chronic absenteeism, that takes all students once they're first enrolled. So pre-K, K, those primary grades, when students enter your school buildings, we need them in school. And chronic absenteeism is students enrolled for 10 or more days, missing 10% or more of a school year. So we are seeing improvements, but we have further gains that need to be made. In the area of college career military readiness, do you see from that report? Or if you've ever been on a high school campus, the state requires us to test a lot to keep students motivated for every test they have. Maybe you have a high school yourself, or have, or soon will, or have a friend. It's really hard to motivate them for the multiple tests that come their way. But when you look at San Angelo ISD and college-ready, going back to that mission of the district, with the district being at 78.7% of college-ready graduates versus the state at 61.9% on page 23, we will fully own the work that we need to have done, but we are producing students that are college-ready. And then dual credit and our opportunities for our students in comparison to the state as a whole, that just really complements the wonderful partnerships we have with Angelo State and Howard. But we have more that we can tap into. Also, if you look at page 28 and 29 of your report, and I alluded to this earlier, the district and the state are very comparable on economic disadvantaged percentages. But it's the at-risk percentages. So the district as a whole is at 58.5%, whereas the state is at 53.2%. We know that means that we have some other barriers to work through, and we fully believe we can do that by taking advantage of all the resources we have. You're discussing right sizing of elementary campuses. That's why I really encourage some exploration of some other elementary campuses across the state. When we have extremely small elementary campuses, we can't utilize our resources as effectively. When you have 2 per grade level to PLC, when you have 2 per grade level and you need auxiliary support staff, but they have to go to 14 other campuses in a time when we're short human capital, that poses some challenges. So the fact that we're having conversations about right sizing is a positive. However, sometimes there's a misconception of when you right-size, you won't be able to maintain small class size ratios. As you'll see on page 30 of that report, the district is very much in line with the state on the class size ratios. So having a right-sized elementary does not remove meeting your ratio requirements from the state for pre-K all the way through 4th grade of 22 to 1 and 5th grade. Those ratios change. So you can see, we're very much in line. The difference is fully running effective campuses in all areas. Focus areas. We know without a doubt that mathematics is a focus area for the district. I gave you the recap of the timeline of what's been done with curriculum when we first addressed the area of RLA at the youngest levels. So this school year, the 2425 school year, the district rolled out support for grades 3 through 5 and high-quality instructional materials in math, and also Algebra 1. It wasn't that we, oops, sorry about that. It wasn't that we skipped the other grades. The high-quality instructional materials were not available from the state at that time. We just got ahead for Algebra 1, because we knew that our student performance was below where we needed it, or not needed it, where we wanted it, because we want all of our students to be at their very best. Also, another focus area, as I've said throughout this discussion, is the area of special education. Special education in the state of Texas means just that. Students receiving both accommodations and modifications to meet their learning styles, but it's differentiation as a whole, which also addresses our gifted and talented learners who have unique smartnesses and gifts that we need to make sure we're differentiating in our classrooms, and also our EB students. And then lastly, a continued focus area for the district is safety. Pointed out the violent incidents. We want students and staff safe in our schools. It's a different time with behavior than any other time in education. That's also one of the board goals, and we will continue to remain focused around the safety and security lens. So that is a whole lot of information that I tried to summarize for all of you. But I do want to remind you that should you or any stakeholder watching, we have a point of contact, and we can schedule follow-up conversations and more detailed discussions, because it is so much information. And I would be happy to do that with anyone wishing to do so.
First off, thank you, Dr. Gomez. Great presentation, and as well, we know the work that is being done, and that sometimes it's just slow, slud for a little while. And we do appreciate how much you and your whole team are diving in and working to get that work done. and working to get that work done. The fact that we actually have curriculum that's approved by the state, instead of having to wait for that high-quality curriculum, has obviously been helpful. Any questions for Dr. Gomez?
I was reading a lot of this stuff, and I got on at home to look at it. There's a lot of positives in there, and then there's a lot of room for work, for improvement. But like you were talking about, the CCMR, the college career military-ready students, you know, we went from 74.9 last year to 81.3, and then the state average is 76.3. So we're doing good on that. There's a lot of things, I mean, like you said, the college-ready students, you know, we're graduating kids that are ready, but there's a lot of things, like you said, mathematics, reading. You don't just teach kids how to read right off the bat. They're not going to pick it up, especially when they're not ready when they come in from kindergarten or whatever. So, but yeah, there's room for improvement, and when you start reading this, it makes good reading for nighttime, if you get really, if you really get tired. It'll show you a lot of something, a lot of positives in there. But thank you for that report.
I think what I'd like to add with that, Mr. Gagos, is that while there's things to be celebrated, there's definite grows as well. And when anyone thinks we don't have room for improvement, we don't need to be here. We're fully committed to thinking inside a box, outside a box, with no box, so that we can make improvements. But there is good to celebrate, and we have a lot of work to do. The good thing is, we have amazing staff who aren't afraid to roll up their sleeves and get to work. So I really can't compliment the amazing teachers we have in our campuses that work with students on a regular basis.
I just want to highlight three things that I think is important to know, and that is, and Farrah, you're so right, we never settle. No one, a teacher never, an educator doesn't settle until, I mean, we're the best that there is, and that we can be. And you talked about, you know, growth. And this report, it'll show that, but you don't truly see the growth until you have that conversation with a child. And I know those conversations are happening this week, and last week, and next week, we're MAPS testing. And I know that teachers have met with their students in a face-to-face, one-on-one conversation, and said, this is what you did last time, what is your goal? And this is where we're going to get. And I've heard children celebrating that their growth. And the other thing is, if anyone has never gone to the TA website and looked at a STAR test, the amount of reading on any math, science, any test is just over the top. So the fact that we're focused on the reading is the foundation, is the key to every test you take. And lastly, I want to say this. Stars state mandated, we take it, we go in there, we are excited, but it is one test on one day. We're not perfect. There are days that children aren't perfect, so we take that with grace. And when maybe a child isn't as successful as they thought they should be, we always celebrate their smartness.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Gomez. All right. So next is item 7 on our agenda. It's going to send items A and B to our minutes from our December meetings, and bid 24-024. Do we have any questions or comments regarding this? We talked about it last week. Our agenda.
Move for approval, Dr. King.
I have a motion from Mr. Dindell. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So a motion from Mr. Dindell, and a second from Dr. Mills. Any further board comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. All right. So next, we have considered campus attendance areas, closure, expansion of Reagan Elementary School attendance boundaries to include current attendance area of San Jacinto Elementary School effective July 1, 2025. And I want to thank you all for bearing with us while we get through the business of this meeting, and thank you all for staying here. Who's presenting on that?
Well, there's not necessarily a formal presentation, other than the comments that, you know, that I made last week about the building being old and the structural foundation being compromised. Our staff doesn't feel that it would be in the district's best interest to recommend to you all to repair San Jacinto for a couple of reasons. We're talking about the declining enrollment, and we're talking about the size of San Jacinto and Reagan together now is still small. And it just doesn't make sense for us to try to repair a building that's 118 years old. Now, I will make a comment that at the beginning of the Facility Advisory Committee process, it was my hope that we could consider a new constructed elementary school. And I don't know that it was intended necessarily to replace San Jacinto, or Reagan, or both, but just a new one for that community. The cost of a new elementary is $45 million. And when we talked about the cost of one elementary school at $45 million, that would benefit about 450 kids versus trying to right-size all of the elementary schools eventually in SAISD, Facility Advisory Committee looked at a Phase 1, which has been presented tonight, and a Phase 2 that actually contains more improvements for existing elementaries with facilities that are not quite as old. And I think the reality is that as our district declines in enrollment, we're going to have to get honest with ourselves about the staffing and the ability for us to house the students we have in the facilities we have now with some upgrades and improvements. I would love to build a new elementary school. I don't think, when you think about the tax impact and the amount of students, that that would benefit compared to the overall upgrades that we would do across the district. I think common sense is, we need to use what we have. And, you know, this sounds crude, but if you have an older, an older human being, let's say a 98-year-old man or woman, who fractures their hip, there's a decision to make, whether you go, you know, into surgery to try to repair that hip, or you live the life you can with what you've got. And I am new to this community, and I have great respect for the people that have been here. I will say respectfully, this is not going to be an easy thing for any community if the board were to approve this. But in the long run for the district, as we decline in enrollment, and as we try to staff better for our kids, you know, I think at the beginning of the year, we had 18 classrooms without a teacher. And so we put substitutes in those classrooms. We have the teachers in our district. We have too many classrooms with very, very small enrollment. And if we, if we fill those classrooms, not to overflowing, but fill those up, we could take the teaching staff we have now and plug the holes, and have higher-quality teaching for our students across the board. So we're talking about a financial impact to the district, and it's not all about the almighty dollar. Yes, we're going to save money if we do this, but that's not the end goal. The end goal is to better provide for all of our students, to put high-quality teachers in front of those kids. And we can do a better job if we move that direction. And it's not just for the San Jacinto community, and several of those parents I've talked to, and several have spoken tonight, and I respect their opinions. I respect them for voicing their opinions. But this is not going to be the final step. We're going to have to do some more consolidating. You heard me say that last week. There needs to be at least two more. And we can, we can operate better as a district. We can provide a better education by doing that. Is it hard? Yes. And I'm sorry for that, but I would recommend that the board consider this tonight.
So, you know, obviously, none of us got on the board to close any schools. I think every person on this board is here to serve the students in San Angelo ISD. And we talk about saving money, but we're not saving money. We're deploying money where it needs to go. We're trying to deploy money to discipline, to reading, to math. We're deploying money so that we can get the most impact for every kid in this district. Okay? And we need to be able to give support to our students. There was a report, it sticks in my head, but there was a report of the kids who come into SAISD as a kindergartner, 13% of those kids are where the state thinks a kindergartner should be. We started 13%. So we have some challenges as a community. And as a community, we have to pray that we have the wisdom and the strength to make tough decisions. Our community just voted for Prop A because they believe our teachers do make a difference. Like, they believe in security for our kids, and they believe that our people are impacting their kids. And now, we have to continue to work with our community to make sure that we're putting everyone in the best situation possible. And so I'm going to make a motion to approve the, I want to say it correctly, so, hold on a second. To approve the current attendance boundaries of Reagan Elementary to include the attendance area for San Jacinto Elementary per policy FC local, and that San Jacinto Elementary School should be closed effective July 1, 2025. Do I have a second, or any other board comments?
Dr. King, and I've been sitting here all meeting, writing down a million fiscal reasons why we close schools or do something different. You know, we're responsible to our employers, we're responsible to our students, we're also responsible to our taxpayers, but, you know, this, this board cares about kids, and it hurts my heart to even, to even think about this. But, you know, with, with life, it comes challenges, change, disruption. And I'm sorry that it's happening at this moment, but long-term, I think we're going to put kids in a better place by moving these kids from, from San Jacinto to Reagan at this point. I would second that motion.
Is there any further board comments or questions?
I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment. I mean, I, both me and my wife, we went to elementary school here. We, I understand the emotional attachment to these schools. I really do. I told my wife last week about, she went to Bowie, about Bowie potentially being on the chopping block, and she was, it's sad. There's, there's, there's no way to cut this, there's no way to make this, no way to sweeten the pot. It's a sad thing. But San Jacinto, the building itself is clearly at a critical fail point. I mean, it has reached its end of life, and that's just where we're at. Do I think Reagan, moving kids to Reagan is a forever, is it without its own problems? Is it a perfect solution? Does it not have its own issues that we'll have to work through? Obviously, it's not perfect. I mean, we're dealing with what we have. Does it make sense to invest a lot of financial resources into a building that's clearly failing? Especially when we have a district that has mountains of facility issues? It just doesn't seem reasonable. I mean, I agree with, I agree with the superintendent's decision to not try and put more money into something that's just not going to help us, especially when we have room for the kids in other building, in other places. Is this part of, do we think Reagan is the forever home? Is this part of the master plan? We don't have to figure that out tonight. Why did, why did San Jacinto fail? That's an exercise in futility. It doesn't matter at this point. The, the building is no longer capable of housing children for school. So like Dr. Kingman mentioned, none of us got on the board to close schools, but unfortunately, I, I think that's, that's just where we are. We're doing, we're making the best decisions with what we have at the moment.
Now, I just have a few comments to the people there at San Jacinto. And like I said, I've been doing this for 20 years, okay? And San Jacinto's been brought up several times before, several times before. We did the work on it in '08, the '08 bond, okay? It had problems then, okay? All we did was slap a Band-Aid on it. And that's what I said back then, out there, we're just putting a Band-Aid on this thing. You know, there were different ways we could have done it, I think, but we didn't. Okay? I've been reading stuff, there's a lot of things that could have led to this, but the bottom line is that it's just, like you said, it's, it's at the end of its life. I mean, you've got peers down there at the bottom, support peers, that are just unbelievable. I mean, we went down there to see them, they're, I mean, we went down to that base, it scared me, being down there. You know, it's just, and then, you know, and the one thing I noticed, that you walk into that building on the inside, and it's a beautiful, well-kept building, but the bottom holds a lot more, and it scares me. That's what scared me. Was going, okay, what's going to happen one day? Yeah, we got our kids in there, that's great. We wanted to do what you want. And this is what I was thinking, I go, you know, why do I want, I know people, I know the attachment, but do you really want to leave them in there when it's?
We don't want to go to that building.
No. Well, I mean, and that's not my, but that's not my point right now. I'm not, I'm trying to talk about, I'm trying to talk about the point of, why should we keep that building open? You know? No, we're not trying to cover up no mistakes. That building's 115 years old. There's no mistakes about it. I mean, it's just old. I mean, there's a lot of things that are old about it. I mean, you know, the peers, the peers that hold it up, the support peers, those were poured in 1909. They weren't even requiring reinforcement rebar in them. You know, there's things on there that, that just scare me. And then you're less than an eighth of a mile from a railroad track that's been used since 1888 that vibrates the ground. There's a lot of things that work into it, a lot of things. And you look at that building, you're going, it is, on the inside, it is beautiful. Now, what we do later on, you know, what we do later on, like resizing elementaries, possibly doing another one, you know, you never know. But we do have the $45 million choice there for resizing schools, and getting the kids to where we need to get them, to provide them better things other than wasting money, I think, on trying to keep something alive that has died. That's, that's how I see it. And not, and not the spirit of the school, that's not what's died. That's, that's gone with you. It's gone with you to Reagan right now. Okay? But I'm talking about the outside structure, what keeps it just there. And, you know, I have no problem anymore. I've got no problem with this because we need to start fixing, instead of just CPR-ing all the time. We need to fix it, and quit putting Band-Aids on it. If it comes to the point where we knock it down and build another one, so be it. Okay? But that's just it. That building has, has come to its, to the end of its life. I mean, it leans, it sags, even if you were to fix whatever's there, it's going to do it again. And then what you do fix there on the bottom, the middle's going to be warped and messed up. So there, there's a lot of things there that just, one's going to lead to another, and we're going to be having this conversation again in two years, or three. I guarantee you, we would. So, so that's, that's my, that's my thought on the whole matter.
Any other board comment?
I just have a quick comment. I just want to recognize that our two principals- I just have a quick comment. I just want to recognize that our two principals are here from San Jac and Reagan. And you have done a tremendous, wonderful job this year. And every student that's walked through those doors know that they are loved, their teachers have taught them, and for that happening so quick and for the job you do, I want to thank you.
Pam, you took the words that I was going to say to thank the principals that are here from San Jac and Reagan. And, you know, Taylor mentioned earlier, Dr. Kingman mentioned earlier, making the most impact for every student. And, you know, I think back to when we, when we voted to keep the school open a year and a half ago. And at the time, I thought we were making the right decision. And I, I think, you know, if we could have had a looking glass and look ahead and see what was going to happen, I think it's much harder this way, the way it happened this year, we're having to, with these kids, having to leave just before school started and make an adjustment without being, having the, you know, without being able to expect that. I think, I think that made a, an impact in a different way that we didn't want to make. And looking back, I wish we decided to close the school back then. You know, we didn't know that back then, you know, but, and I just think, when we think about the, the safety of our students, that's one of our top priorities. I, even if we were able to fix the supports and make the school better and make it safe for the kids to walk in the doors, long-term, is that providing safety for our students. And that's, that's what's causing me to move the other way.
Any other board comments or questions?
This is a hard decision. Very hard, believe me. But, as you say, we need new elementary schools. We need new schools. I have faith that this is only the beginning for a better future for our kids. Every kid deserve, deserve the best. And I think what we decide tonight is going to be the best for our kids.
Any other board comments or questions? So, we have a motion for myself and a second from Mr. Dindal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 7-0. Now we're going to move to item C, which Dr. Self's going to help us with the, consider our targeted improvement plans. We already did that one?
We did. Yes, we did.
Good evening, Dr. Kingman, Dr. Moran, and members of the board. This evening, I am providing a school improvement overview for San Angelo ISD. And we are going to ground ourselves in our lovely Pac-Man charts, from what you can see, provided to us by Lead Forward, because I think that will ground ourselves in how our campuses are identified for school improvement. So if you'll pay a particular attention to Domain 3, that's the closing the gaps column. This is what Texas Education Agency utilizes to align with the criteria of schools for improvement under the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, at the federal level, to identify campuses that need comprehensive support and improvement, as well as targeted support and improvement. And just as a brief refresher, for campuses to be identified as targeted, they have to have a student group or student groups that misses their targets and at least the same three edu, indicators for at least three consecutive years in a row. In order to be identified as comprehensive, this is where TEA will take a look at our Title I campuses, based on those closing the gap scores. And those campuses are ranked by TEA, and TEA determines which of those campuses fall in the bottom 5% for each school type, and that's how a campus is determined as comprehensive support. In San Angelo ISD, we have campuses that have been identified for both, for comprehensive. We are looking at Bowie Elementary, Fannin Elementary, Lakeview High School, Bel Air Elementary, and Goliad Elementary. For targeted support, we are looking at Lincoln, Lincoln Middle School, Crockett Elementary, and Lone Star Middle School. TEA does require that every campus that is identified as comprehensive or targeted, they are required to submit a targeted improvement plan to TEA every year, just to report on the strategies that each of those campuses are utilizing to address the, the closing the gaps needs for each of those specific campuses. It is a two-way feedback process and involves not only TEA, but also our local education service center as well. A TIP plan includes, again, strategies for in, enhancing student performance and closing those gaps. There are strategic conversations around data components and evidence that we look at to ensure that we are, number one, targeting the right areas for each of those campuses, and we are measuring the impact of those strategies, as well as the impact of the systems that we have in place that will get us the student outcomes that we desire. A TIP plan is extremely important, is it help really and truly drives the work and the conversations over the course of the year regarding the, the student performance and our opportunity, areas for growth. And we, we also prioritize gaps in our school systems and practices as well. There are two predominant high-leverage school improvement strategies that we are focusing on, and predominantly across the board, not just on campuses that have been identified for school improvement, but the majority of our campuses have engaged in an effective schools framework diagnostic. We have campuses that have opted in. It's not a requirement, but they want to know where their areas of strength are and where their opportunities for growth are. We also participate in an instructional leadership development through Texas Instructional Leadership that is facilitated by our friends at Region 15. The best way to describe the ESF diagnostic and the Texas Instructional Leadership Pathway is basically, the ESF diagnostic is like a diagnosis for a campus. And then when you're working with Region 15 through the TEAL pathway, that is the, the cure. That is the, the focus where you're, you're going to spend your time as a campus leader, and they'll be provided the tools and the professional learning to address those areas. I think another big point of consideration is to bring attention, again, to the implementation of the high-quality instructional materials that our district has already implemented. We've taken a huge leap forward and are definitely ahead of the curve in regards to that. At the elementary level, we are going to utilize, we are utilizing Amplify now, but in all things education, names and acronyms can sometimes change on us. But Blue Bonnet Reading and Math for Elementary, HMH Science for Elementary, and Carnegie for Algebra I at the secondary level. So again, we're already ahead of the curve when it comes to that work. Just kind of providing an overview of what the effective schools framework is, because it does drive the school improvement process. This is the core. The framework, it's based on years of research, and it is essentially encompassed in five levers. So lever one is strong school leadership and planning. Lever two is strategic staffing. Lever three is positive school culture. Lever four is high-quality instructional materials and assessments. And lever five is effective instruction. So, in order for a campus to engage in a diagnostic, we actually have an outside entity, an unbiased outside entity actually perform that diagnostic. So it's not any of us on the, internally, that is looking at these, these areas on each of the campuses, which I think is a bonus. The diagnostic findings that we looked at after all of our campuses, or the majority of our campuses engaged in those diagnostics, we found that the prioritized focus areas all fell under lever five in effective instruction, and more specifically in the areas of professional development for effective classroom instruction, as well as building teacher capacity through observation and feedback cycles. Those capacity-building strategies, two of those keystone strategies are offering targeted professional learning, not only for our teachers, but also building capacity in our instructional leaders on campuses. The other strategy, key strategy, is the implementation of a coaching infrastructure. Now, this is something that has been in the works for well over the past year and a half. But with a coaching infrastructure in place, the best way to describe it is that everyone has a coach, because in SA ISD, we have a growth mindset. Even our principal supervisors have a coach from Region 15. Each principal is coached by a principal supervisor, and in turn, those principals are coaching and building capacity, not only in their assistant principals, but also building capacity in their teachers as well. In order for principals in our campus leadership teams to have that capacity, we have to provide targeted professional learning and put those tools in the administrator toolboxes to make that happen. Because the individuals closest to the teachers that will augment that student success are the teachers. They're the closest to the students. So we realize the significant need. With the coaching infrastructure as well, we realize that scope of impact is a huge thing. We would love to clone all of our amazing instructional leaders, but unfortunately, we don't have that technology quite yet. So we have to increase our scope of impact by building capacity in our other campus leadership team members as well. So we can do that with the, the implementation of the coaching infrastructure. We are engaging in weekly, bi-weekly, and monthly coaching conversations with principals. We are monitoring numerous data points and linking in evidence to make sure that the systems that we have in place on campuses are actually effective. Because really and truly, if, if you remember, those prioritized focus areas for not only our, our campuses that have been identified in school improvement, but across the board, are definitely targeted professional learning and observation and feedback cycles. If you're ever curious, I could talk to you all in that long about the research behind this, but I will spare you. But just in case you are curious, again, our practices are grounded and rooted in research. One thing I, I do want to, to leave you with is, all of our actions and initiatives in SA ISD at the district and the campus level, they're not just driven by compliance. I know a targeted improvement plan is a requirement, but at the end of the day, the components in that targeted improvement plan are going to be driven by things that really make a difference for students on campuses, as well as teachers. So, we are committed to engaging in best practices across the board at every campus.
Any questions?
No, I would just, oh, go ahead, Amy. Go ahead. No, I was just going to make a comment that we, 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 I guess the, what you were saying, how we are working on this, but the schools that weren't included, the ones that met the criteria and all that. So we'll still keep doing the same thing we're doing there.
Yes, sir, absolutely, because it's what's best for students.
We've got a lot more that, that met it than the ones that didn't. So, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to thank you for all your, all your work on that. And I know that these targeted improvement plans take a lot of effort, time and effort. My, I guess my question is the change of our high-quality instructional material from Amplify to Blue Bonnet in reading and math. And I don't know how much others have researched, but it's pretty controversial. And I, I kind of thought that we would have some board discussion on that before we voted for that. So, I don't know if, I don't know where the rest of the board is. We haven't ever talked about it, but I would like for there to be some discussion on that.
I'll jump in really quick. There will be board discussions starting in February about the long-term planning for the district, including some detailed information, because I completely agree that there has been some controversy presented. There's also been some information, partial information released, as I spent over an hour today just on House Bill 1605 and these instructional materials. So, sometimes information gets shared with the public before full details have even been shared with educators. So it is our responsibility and obligation to give you that information, and we'll be coming forward starting in February.
So, if, I'm sorry, so if we approve this targeted improvement plan tonight, does that, does that approve using Blue Bonnet in reading and math?
What Dr. Self was saying, because first of all, we don't have Blue Bonnet in this school year. So you're approving the plan with the strategies for the professional learning that we are undergoing, which does include, currently, we are using Amplify and Eureka. Blue Bonnet learning is the equivalent with the Texas standards and the TECS, but those are not in our campuses or in our schools yet. They're not even available until the '25, '26 school year.
I'm sorry, I understand that. I just want to, I just want to, and I appreciate that, and I know, I understand what you're saying.
The plan is specific to the strategy, though we can't, we can't approve materials that we aren't in possession of.
Right. And I guess my question was just because it's listed in the strategy. So I, I just want to make sure that, of course, I want to approve, approve your work. There's no doubt there. But I just, I want to make sure that before I approve it, that we are not approving Blue Bonnet currently, before we've had a chance to really look at it and discuss it.
It will be shifting if it's approved, but currently, it's Amplify. So, I think it's just important to realize that the strategy is high-quality instructional materials, for sure.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. We can't take any comment right now. Thank you, though.
Not a comment, but I don't think I understood what you're asking.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's Amplify. My apologies. It's Amplify. Yes.
Amplify and Blue Bonnet are the same company?
The same thing, yes. But Blue Bonnet is Texas-specific.
Texas-specific Amplify?
Yes, sir.
Is now Blue Bonnet?
Yes, sir.
And so if we had a plan with Amplify, if we continue to improve our plans with Amplify, which we have done for the last two years?
It will shift to?
That would shift automatically to Blue Bonnet.
Yes, sir.
If we decide to go with a different high level, that would also change if that, at the point in time we discuss that. But for this discussion, we're really just approving the same thing that we have currently?
Yes, sir.
That we've been using previously. It just, the state changed the name on us.
Yes, sir.
And they haven't even released what that is yet.
That's the Christian.
I know what it is.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying Amplify is not.
So, anyway, that's the summary of this.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm just going to make a comment on what you said that I love. Lots of things, really. But, you know, we talk about PLCs and merging our schools so that our kids can collaborate. And what I want our community to see is that we are collaborating from kindergarten all the way to the top. And the kids are collaborating, teachers are PLC, and y'all are providing time for the, our principals to collaborate. Everyone is collaborating for one goal and one purpose, and that is to be the best that we can be for our children. And I wanted to bring that to light. I know you said that, but that's truly what we're all about. And thank you for knowing that that's important, that, you know, we never stop growing. We expect our kids to grow. We expect them to set goals. We, as adults, need to model that. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, real quick, Farah. You said that in February, we're going to meet again to discuss keeping, or it's, keeping Amplify, but becoming Blue Bonnet?
Yes, sir. To clarify, we will be discussing the district selection of high-quality instructional materials, as there's been a change last spring, when we went through the process and you all approved. We discussed how the prior proclamation process is no longer. So, what we So what we had been using was Amplify and Eureka. Blue Bonnet Learning are from the same parent companies, but they're Texas-specific, and they address the Texas essential knowledge and skills. For clarity, educators are getting full access to the curriculum, but what Dr. Self was saying, we've been on the path with Amplify and Eureka, and that's how we're ahead, because we've had professional learning and a lot of work around internalizing the curriculum, which the premise behind that is to save teachers' time. But that is a process when you start new materials, but the district does not currently have Blue Bonnet Learning instructional materials, they are not even available for purchase at this time, they were just approved.
Okay, and that was approved on House Bill 1605, you said? Okay, thank you.
Everyone good? Anyone have a question to answer? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the targeted improvement plans as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the targeted, the TIPS as presented.
So a motion from Dr. Mills and a second from Mrs. Duncan. All, any other board comment or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes seven zero. Next is Consider Our Midyear Superintendent Evaluation, we did that under Personnel in last meeting, so I'll make the motion to just approve the mid-year evaluation of the superintendent as discussed in closed session under Chapter 551.074 of the Texas Open Meetings Act.
I'll second.
Motion for myself and a second from Mr. Dindal. Any other board questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes seven zero. All right, announcements, we have a finance and pre-agenda workshop on February 10th and a regular board meeting on February 18th, and with that, we are adjourned.